How's it going Katanning? Welcome to the Greatest City in the World Podcast. I'm Andrew Ladisaw. I'm here with John Straight, running for county commissioner. We did these interviews about four years ago. I interviewed all of the county commissioner candidates. And so I'm really excited to have John here for this round. And John, can you tell us a little bit about who you are?
Hi, so my name is John Straight. I live in Dayton, Pennsylvania. I'm a lifelong resident of Armstrong County. Started out when I got out of high school. My family had a dairy farm, so I did that for 20 years. The, the options with a dairy farm is you either get a lot bigger or, you know, choose something different. So I chose another direction. From then I started Genesis Screens, which was a printing and advertising company. I did that for 26 years. That company ran until COVID and unfortunately COVID affected my company greatly. I do, I did work for a lot of schools and a lot of small businesses and with nobody being open, it was just a, just a bad year for that.
Oh yeah, for sure.
I chose at that point to offer my business for sale and I sold it to a man in distance. So it still operates under Genesis Screens today and continues to grow.
Is that why you have such cool shirts?
Yeah, the shirts are done, it's done from Genesis Screens, but unfortunately now I'm paying retail instead of wholesale. That's how that works in my life. Since I sold my business, I then started, I've always had a passion for cooking and catering. I do a lot of that through my church. So I started a catering business, which is called Straightforward. And I've done that from COVID till now.
I love it. Yeah, I've, I've seen your stuff on Facebook and specifically like I've seen Italian food that you make and then barbecue that you make.
Yeah, I do a pulled pork and, and the last name Straight is the German side of my family. Vito Amiano is my Italian side. So that's where the Italian heritage comes from on that.
Well, your food looks amazing. So if nothing else, I gotta, we gotta make that happen.
There you go. I can take care of that for you.
So you did, you see you've had several businesses. The dairy farm resonates with me as well. I have family that are still dairy farm. Or they just got out of the dairy business actually in Wapton, North Dakota.
Oh, really?
Yeah, so small, small world, but they had the same issue, you know, small dairy farm. It's like you gotta either get really big or you're.
That's true. And it's a seven day a week around the clock job and, and that's fine. But occasionally I like to go to places and see things and that doesn't give you that option too often.
It's kind of sad though, because you have all those that you look at kind of history of Armstrong County Agricultural Society. And it's like, a lot of that stuff is kind of gone now.
Yeah, in my part, which is I live in Wayne Township. So in Wayne Township alone, when there was a couple of dozen dairy farms, not that many years ago, we're down to basically just a couple, you know, it's sad.
Yep, definitely. So through that whole process, like, how did you get to the point like right now where you're saying, hey, I, I want to run for a county commissioner and I want to give a crack at that job?
Well, I had, I had four men that are influential in my life come to me. They know my strong points and things that I'm, I'm able to accomplish. Basically through the history of just seeing what I've done at the Dayton Fair and the work that I do at Harvest. So when they approached me, I thought, I can enter into this. I had heard there were going to be openings in a commissioner race, so I decided to enter into it. And now I sit here with four guys on the Republican side, running for commissioner. So we'll see how that all plays out.
Yeah. And the primaries coming up, I think we're just a few weeks away now.
Three weeks away. I've, I've a counter on my website. I would encourage you guys that are watching this to go to my Facebook page and go to my website. But when that counter clicks to zero, I'll be a happy guy. It's, it's, it's a lot. It's a lot of work.
Yeah, I see you've been all over the place and I know that's just part of it. And you're going visiting all the festivals and fire halls and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah, lately I've gone to, so I serve as an executive elder at Harvest Church and alongside of that. So alongside of caring for folks, I lead a grief share class, which is caring for folks that have lost loved ones. I had a kitchen team and so, so my values and my Christian faith is the foundation of everything that I do.
That's actually what I was just gonna ask you is what, like what drives you as a person and what inspires you to want to do this? So I mean, obviously that has to be.
Well, yeah, actually my, my, so my Christian faith inspires me to try to reach folks and try to have a voice as a Christian. Also what inspires me is, is what I've done in the past with the Dayton Fair. I consider this just a little bit of bigger chunk of land and, and just try to improve and do public service the best I can. I really, really enjoy public service.
I love that. I love that. So tell me, like, we start with the good stuff and then we'll get into some of the problems. So like first good thing is like, what do you, what do you love about Armstrong County? Like what, why do you, why do you care?
Well, I, I think Armstrong County, just we could walk down the street and look at the beautiful river. The town itself is coming across the bridge and you have the view of the courthouse and Market Street is just absolutely beautiful. And go to the towns, just continue down through the county. Each town has its own unique little features. There's little shops. It seems like the county's on a verge of a turnaround. You know, it seems like folks are, are, are coming to rural areas for some recreation, some entertainment. And I just think that there is just so much to offer through that. And then, and then our festivals, you know, from the Dayton Fair, which I'm heavily involved in, to the Folk Festival and, and, you know, all the things that are just, they're just here and let's, let's utilize them and make them better if we can.
Yeah, I think it's, I still, I mean, obviously I'm a homer for Katanning and Armstrong County, but there's just so much here that is undervalued by the people that, by the people that live here and certainly we're a forgotten county for the, for the region. And it just shouldn't be that way.
It should, and I'm embarrassed to even say some of the things that I haven't seen in the county myself, but I was, I was coming across up above Caudogon. And I don't know the name of that park. Do you know the name of the park that's up by Caudogon? Top of the hill?
It's a ding, it's not the Dingaling Park or whatever it is.
So there was, there was a lot of politicians, a lot of election signs there. So I chose to pull off to put a sign in and the view of the river from there is stunning. I only could imagine what it looks like in the fall. These are areas that we all have at our, just at our disposal. You know, grab a little picnic lunch and go sit up at the park and, and just look at that. And it's, it's absolutely gorgeous.
Yep. So much natural beauty here. It's unbelievable. So I love that too. Favorite things to do, places to visit in the county? Sounds like festivals, those kinds of things. Anything else that we didn't mention?
No, the, the northern part of the county has a lot to offer with just when you get out into the country part of it and just the hills and just every turn has a different view. I just love every part of it. And the southern part of the county, I'm excited with some of the stuff that's taking place in the southern part of the county. What's going on with our trail systems is outstanding. The things that are taking place there. Yeah.
Absolutely. So as a like of, I'm assuming since you're, you're, you cook great food. Do you enjoy going out for, for good food as well?
I do. We have such great restaurants here.
You have a favorite in Armstrong County?
Boy, that's a tough question to ask a guy that's just running for politics, you know.
Cause you want to like mention all of them.
Oh yeah. Yeah. They're all great. That's just ended at that. I do have favorites, but, and we've got new ones coming in. Are you aware of what's taking place up at the Plaza? That there's a, if I understand, an Arby's in the future?
I heard that was coming. Yeah. I hope it's true. It's been a while. It's been a while. They've been talking about it.
When we get a Chick-fil-A, we will know we've made it, huh?
That's it. That's it, man. If we get the Lord's chicken, then we're good to go.
Amen to that.
So that's the good stuff. What do you see as like, I'm assuming you're running because you see some things that you think you could help with? What, what are some of the problems that you see in Armstrong County or like, or maybe the opportunities that you see?
Problems that I see is it's hard to get folks to come into the area to move in because we have, we have some high taxes that we pay here. I don't know. I'm not going to say that I have some magic potion on how to fix any of that. But increasing the population absolutely starts to fix that. If my, and I, and if my, what people were telling me is correct, Katanning itself has dropped below 4,000 folks. Are you aware of that?
Yep.
So, so that happens with the census. So the census comes out. So we drop below that 4,000 population number. There was money that was granted to the county, to Katanning Borough of $60,000 a year. So now we're in this 10 year cycle. The census doesn't come back for another 10 years. So for 10 years, we lose that money.
Right.
You know, and that's big. So, so how do we fix that? How do we bring folks into Katanning? There's rumors of a lot of really good things coming into town here. And here again, if we can get the trail system, the folks that are, that are involved in a trail system onboard and, and this becomes a destination for that. So many of the trail systems stem off of right here where we're at. We're kind of centrally located for that. So, so you're going to hear a lot of that from me because that is low hanging fruit to me. That's just, that's just start with that. It's here. We don't have to build it. The rivers are here, the trails are here. Let's utilize it. Let's try to bring things in and hopefully then folks think, you know what? This is a great place to live. And the more folks that come in, the more we could hold taxes to pay.
Yep. So that's one. We got population. We got to bring people here and lower and get taxes down. Those are kind of coincide.
They coincide and everybody says, well, how do we bring jobs? How do we get jobs here so that our families don't move away? I don't know if we're ever going to see businesses like we used to have, you know, in Ford City with, with Elder and PPG. I don't know. You know, it seems like that might be something that that's hard to do. But here again, by utilizing the tourist attractions that we have here and the things that we have, you know, that's going to create jobs and that could bring smaller businesses in. I see smaller businesses coming in the area more than I would see, you know, a large company coming in here.
Sure. Yeah. And you have some of the things going on like the R I D C Armstrong and that kind of stuff down there seems to start, be starting to get.
R I D C excites me. I don't exactly know, you know, not sitting in a position of a commissioner. I don't exactly know all that took place to, to merge that with R I D C. But there is some potential with growth there. They just had groundbreaking not that long ago. There's a housing development coming in there. And here again, if we get houses, we get folks and families moving here and that helps our taxes.
Absolutely. Yep. Yeah. Any other problems? I know I saw on your website, you had a couple of things listed with like opioid epidemic, those kinds of things. Do you see those as kind of like top of your list items as far as things that are?
Well, yeah, that is. And that's unfortunate. And in a lot of these smaller towns that, you know, the intersees has moved, industry has moved away. That seems to be the next thing that happens. You start to have drug issues with that. I, I think, I think to, to end drugs is, there's always going to be some drug issues, but the stuff that's going around now, it's killing people, which is absolutely terrible. So we have, we have police, we have sheriff's department. These folks are all during their jobs already. I don't have to do their job or teach them. They're doing their job. I just want to try to come alongside them and equip them with what they need to be able to do their job better.
Right. Yeah. Yeah, I like that. I think that's, that's definitely part of the, part of the solution. And then for me, there's always like a spiritual side to it and there has to be, like you have to cut down the supply. I think that's the law enforcement job. And then we're trying to do things like Hope Center and that kind of stuff to partner with government agencies to cut down on the demand hopefully too. And if you can bring those two things down together, I do think it can be solved.
I do too. I do too. And our churches, our churches need to get involved, you know? That's not just talk about, there's a drug, drug problem. Let's try to get involved and, and get into the communities and, and help with it.
Yeah. So much of it's just talking about it and making, losing the stigma.
One of the, one of the reasons I chose to run because we all sit in services over and, and we, and we see the course of how everything is going in the nation. I, I am so frustrated with the divisions amongst political parties. I don't know if it's ever been this bad. Where parties fight amongst themselves, they've, you know, I, I use this statement. All I know is Armstrong County will be better if we work together than apart. Together, you know, it's just Armstrong County. It's, it's not an enormous task to just get everybody to come together. We don't have to agree with what other parties think and we don't have to, but, but we, you know, love one another.
Yeah, absolutely.
Let's just, let's just work together.
Yep. Yeah, I like to hear that because I mean, there's a lot of people that say, hey, as a county, small county, we should just have one executive there. But the, the fact of the matter is that we're going to have three. And so whoever's there is going to have to work with other people.
Yeah, yeah. And I'm willing to work, you know, the folks of the county are the ones that are going to make decisions who sits in these offices. I'm willing to work with any of them that are there and, and try to restore relationships and, and just build this county.
Yeah, absolutely. So I want to walk back through a couple of these things. So just as follow up. So you talked about increasing population, especially getting Katanning over 4,000, those kinds of things. What do you see? I know you said there's some tourism aspects there that you talked about. But like, what do you see as like the, that you could do as a commissioner to help to draw people here? I mean, what do we have to do?
We just have to present the county in a light of a positive, just a positive place to come to. I, I don't, these are hard questions to answer.
They are.
When I don't sit in the office and know that the struggles that are already there. You know, I don't know. Maybe, maybe the current commissioners have already battled the same thing. And, but, and there's roadblocks and there's things that you have to hurdles you have to jump over. So I gotta get in that office. If I get, if the folks of Armstrong County elect me, let me get in that office. Let me look at these things, assess the things and then see what we can do to grow the county. I just know that the things that I do see in the future, there's, there's talk of a, of a brewery and a coffee roaster. Can we make that happen? I really, really think we can. And I think that's already in mush, in motion. And by doing that, that starts to clean up these areas in buildings that are just decaying and falling down. And that's a start. So you get folks to come in here and spend a weekend in Armstrong County and they think, you know, I'm tired of living in, in bigger urban areas. Let's get out to this area.
Yeah. Yeah, I think there's a, there, well, that, that's why I started the YouTube channel actually was because I know that we have an image problem. When you look at, when I used to search, I remember when I first looked at it doing YouTube and I thought about making videos about Katanning. I searched Katanning on YouTube and that like the first three things that came up were like stories from Pittsburgh, about three devastating events that happened here. It was like WPXI investigates a murder in Katanning or massive fire in Katanning. It was like, there was nothing but bad news, but, but there's, we're not a, we're not a bad news area.
We are not a bad news area. And unfortunately the, that's what brings the press out. You know, they, they all sit and listen to their scanners like we have in our homes. And that's the first thing that draws them out here is when there's an issue like that. It seems harder to get them out here when we're actually in the middle of a really great event, you know? And then it, it just doesn't draw the folks or the news like it, you know, like it should.
Yeah. Now from a county perspective, I know that you, the Tourism Bureau used to be part of the county. I think it's its, its own separate entity now is Experience Armstrong. Have you been talking with them at all from the tourism aspect and the trails, with the trails and all those kinds of things?
I have. And, and honestly, I, I can't express the excitement that I have to come alongside of those folks. Because of my heavy involvement with, I, I had the Dayton Fair and, and festivals and things that actually are tied to recreation. The things that are just on our fingertips of changing really, really, really excites me. So you know, now here again, I'll be working with two other men. So there's that, you know, I don't know what their thoughts are. We have to all work together and be unified in that. And maybe they have their own direction that they want to go with things. And that's fine. But yeah, that's just, it's just a great, great question. And, and that's my thoughts is to get alongside of them. Actually, my wife, everything that we were involved in, you kind of get both of us. And, and already my wife is, there's a, oh, I can't think of the name. There's a, there's a arts initiative that started. Are you familiar with that?
Yeah. Yeah, they're having a meeting.
Tonight.
Today, yeah.
Yeah, there's a meeting tonight at six. And so we're involved in that. I, I never was one to visit art places, but my wife being an artist has dragged me to countless art little studios everywhere I've traveled. And, and I look at that and I think, what a great thing to bring folks in here. So alongside, now we have a, we have a market in town tomorrow. And these are just all great things. The, the historical center, the library, all these folks are at these art initiative meetings, all with the same intention. There's good solid people there that want to see these changes made.
Yeah. So I have a question because you're, you've started a couple of small businesses and you, it sounds like you, you think the future of Armstrong County is going to, going to be driven or grown by a small business in, in a large part. What, like what challenges did you have starting small businesses that, that you think like, man, that would help if that was easier? Or like, man, if you could, if we could walk people through X, Y, and Z, they would really be far ahead. Is there anything that comes to mind on that?
Well, when you start a business and, and everything I've done, I've started out of scratch. It's not like I've bought a business that was already established. So that's, that's a whole different avenue. You work tirelessly for hours. I mean hours. And for years until you actually get to show a profit. And, and small businesses struggle with tax time. Taxes are hard. And, and so you basically scrape to pay your taxes and then you do without because of that. So there are tax incentives out there and there's a program that can give you some tax breaks for a deferred period of year. You know, you pay a, a certain percentage each year until you get up to the full tax base. That's the things that would help a small business come in here and just, you know, however, we could stand alongside them and just give them some of the help needed to, to make that happen. I don't know the number of self-employed businesses that are in Armstrong County. I, I don't know if that's on the census or not. I've not looked that up, but it's huge. Every, every corner you go around, every rural town all has small self-employed families. It's big. It's big here. And sometimes they don't, we, they have a voice, but they're so busy working at their businesses, they don't let me share their voice.
Yeah. And I think, yeah, that's, that's, that was kind of my thoughts too. And we've been talking about this with, with D K I, which is the local business group here in Katanning. It's like, how can we, because it's, it's hard to start a small business. You feel like you're just on an island and you're just like the only person, the whole weight of the world's on your shoulders and you're trying to like feed your family at the same time. So it's like, how can we make these things easier? And we've been talking a lot about that. Like, what if there was a, like we're, we're a business coalition, but what if there was a county wide, like small business initiative where we were sharing and, and doing things to, to help each other and sharing information to make things easier and best practices and all that kind of stuff. Or safety, how can we come together to, to fight the opioid epidemic? Like, is there something we could do together that would make that happen? Or make jobs available for people coming out of that recovery? And there's a multitude of things that I'm just like, I'm always thinking about that stuff.
I am too. And there's always jobs. There's jobs available everywhere. Everywhere you turn, there's jobs available, but yet we don't have a workforce that seems to want to. Things have changed that way as well. You know, you could be hired just about anywhere you walk into if, if you want to work. You're not going to make a huge amount of money starting out in a job, but that's okay. That's what builds character. You know, that's business. That's just, that's what makes it, I, I was asked if, if I would be a full-time commissioner. And my answer, yes, anything I've done, I'm full-time at. And, and the, the hours of a full-time commissioner in the county is sits somewhere in the mid 30 hours or 38 hours a week. I'm not sure what that is, but being self-employed, that usually takes me to about Wednesday. So you're not going to find me sitting in an office for eight hours, but I'll be in the ditch looking at the struggles that the townships have. I have it in my, I'm in one of the, one of the more rural townships in Wayne Township. And they struggle. All gravel roads and, and the days of just replacing a culvert is not what it was years ago. You know, you used to be able to dig an old culvert out and put a new one in. If anything changes, you've got architects involved. You've got so countless drawings and engineers involved in it. And it costs a lot of money just to replace a culvert, you know, and that's countywide issues.
Yeah. I think we mentioned a little that you're, you're part of the Dayton Fair, right?
Yeah, I serve as a vice president of the Dayton Fair. It's not just a one week a year job. The Dayton Fair functions all year long. I sit as a vice president, head grounds manager. And if you come to our fair, a lot of the stuff that happens, most everything that happens outside of the barns, my fingers are in that. But primarily grandstand events, the concerts we bring in. So I'm working heavily, getting sponsors. Without sponsors, the fair would not continue to grow and, and better. And we continually upgrade and, and improve the buildings. That's the sponsors. The grants that we receive. I've got a good relationship with our senators and our representatives and they're always willing to come alongside and try to help us find funds to, to, to improve things.
I guess that's what I was kind of getting at was like, what, what do you do there that you feel like would translate to the, to the county level? But those relationships and grants, that's huge.
Same thing. Like we do a, we do Christian concerts on Monday night. We had Crowder was our group that we had last year. That's a $35,000 show. I had $14,000 of sponsorships to pay for that show. Those all came from Christian based businesses. And that, without that, there are no concerts like that. And I'm, that's the same thing here in the county level. It's the money that we can bring in through these programs that allow us to do any of the stuff that, that needs to be done.
Yeah. I know the boroughs and, and at the county level too, there's just, you know, everyone starve for tax dollars. And like you said, it's not like they can, raising taxes is not a good idea in Armstrong County politically.
So, so the school tax, that brings up a good point. The school taxes are out of our hands. That's the school districts that does that. That's, those are the taxes that kill all of us. The county taxes are really, that's our spring tax. They're not as painful. All taxes are painful, but yeah, that, it's, I don't know. I don't know.
It's like political suicide to raise taxes.
Absolutely would be political suicide.
So you gotta have relationships for state money for programs or you have to, you have to know how to maneuver those things to, to make it happen.
You do. You could, you could raise taxes. You could really put a big increase on taxes. You're still not going to help these county supervisors that are trying to do this. So that's the outside sources that come in. The, the Wayne Township, I'll mention it again, their, their township shed is a falling down old barn with three walls. There's not even a fourth wall on it where they hold their meetings is this little tiny room. And they're content and they smile when they go to work, you know? A building that they can actually maintain their equipment in the wintertime would be a great thing to have. That comes through outside sources, you know?
Yep. Well, very good. So like, this is kind of the big, the big question. Like overall, 10 years from now, let's say you're a commissioner, you get a couple of terms. Everything goes the way that you think that it can go. And like you have a, we have a dream scenario over the next decade. What's Armstrong County look like 10 years from now?
Armstrong County, in my opinion, we'll go back, we'll start with the tourism. Can become these little quaint towns that we all visit. 10 years from now, the potential of an outfitter coming in here, setting up where you could rent kayaks and kayak on the river, rent bikes. You know, a place to stay if you're on the, the whole trail system that you're coming from point A to point B. You make it a destination. Make it a destination. You bring, you know, you bring ice cream, coffee, a brewery, a winery, some art studios. Why would you not want to come here?
Absolutely.
You know, so that would be my 10 year vision. Small businesses, just almost the way it was how many years ago? Do we have to go further than 20 years ago? Maybe.
Yeah, probably.
You know, just, let's just bring this, this, let's just bring this back. More restaurants, more hotels. Which the hotel taxes, what helps all these other things run. It's just, I just, I'm just excited. I, I think, I think we're just on a verge of doing something special here. Coming out of COVID, it seems like folks have migrated to more outdoor activities. And we have it. We have it here and I'm excited to get to work. If elected, I'm excited to get to work with that part of it. And let's see what we could do with Armstrong County. That's grow Armstrong County. That's on a sign somewhere.
Yeah. If not, it should be.
It should be.
Is there any other topics that we didn't cover? I want to give you a chance here at the end, just to give you your elevator pitch, like why you're the right guy for the job. But is there anything else that we missed that you wanted to talk about?
I don't know. I think we've covered a lot of it. I think we've covered about all of it. You know, my pitch. I've been involved with, I, I'm not a firefighter myself. First responders, that's a tough job. My son-in-law sits as a lieutenant with our local fire company. I've watched these guys that, that volunteer their time and go out there and, and they see things that they shouldn't have to see. And they file it away somewhere. These guys work tirelessly and then they come and they try to have countless gun raffles and events to try to improve the, the companies. I would love to stand aside those guys. Not that I can have a magic fix on where we can get funding for those, but by golly, I know their hearts and I know their passions and I know why they do what they do. Those folks are important to me. As, as for my faith, when I announced at my church that what I was going to do, I, I want them all to hold me accountable, that I don't waver from what my faith is. My honesty and my integrity is important to me too. So that's, that's a very important thing. So I've got about, I got quite a few folks watching me to make sure that, you know, that doesn't go bad.
That's awesome.
Yeah. And I, and I had a meeting with the elders last night and I, I told them again, I said, you guys got to help me. You gotta pray for me. For, for those that are Christians and believers out there that are watching this, I'd appreciate all their prayers. Because without God, a lot of the stuff that, that you and I stand for is, is just isn't, it's not worth even trying to, trying to do. It's not worth even trying to trying to do.
Yeah. Totally agree.
Yeah, uh a lot of folks ask me, uh well, what do you know about, do you know about running a county? Well, very little. But uh as a self-employed guy that started business, I knew very little about all of that when I started that as well. But I'm not afraid to dig into it and and to work through it. Uh there's a there's a quote and I think it's, I think it's uh. I think it's a quote by Teddy Roosevelt where where he says, a lo- a lot of folks, folks don't care. How much you know until they know how much you care. And uh and that's my heart. I do care.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I uh I love your heart, man. I love talking to you. This was uh, it was re- great to, it's great to get to know you a little bit more and to. And to watch your your whole campaign unfold. It's been fun to see you going around and um and kind of feeling this thing out. But I'm excited. I I I wish you the very best and uh if people want to support your campaign, learn more about you, that kind of stuff. What's the best way for them to contact you?
Uh social media, uh which is in everybody's hands right now. Uh you can find me on my Facebook. Uh which is basically Committee to Elect John Straight and John Straight, or I'm sorry, johnstraight.com. Uh you'll find out more about me. You message me on Facebook, I'm gonna answer you. Uh I will talk to anybody.
Yeah.
Uh I wanna talk to the folks that are living in town here struggling to make their payment. There is important to me. Everybody's important to me.
Yeah.
Uh and I will listen to you. I might not be able to fix what you have immediately with your issue, but I'm gonna hear your heart. You know, and I'm gonna try my best to to stand alongside of you. Uh that's that's what I offer. Uh that's what I offer. I will be accessible to everyone.
Yeah, very cool. Well, I'm excited for the elections. I'm excited to see where we end up. I'm I'm praying over the elections myself and I'll definitely be praying for you and um if yours, if there's anything else that you wanna share uh later on, you know. Would love to sit down with you.
Well, and and I I I never touched on this, so so they predict this to be a low voter voter turnout. Uh Christians have an unbelievable voice. And an unbelievable opportunity to put folks in office that stand for what we believe. Uh that carries through to, uh there are some judges running in the state. Uh that are gonna sit on the the Pennsylvania courts and pick the right candidates. Research them. The decisions that these judges make four and five years from now will come back to where we live here. That's important. So not only am I here promoting myself, I'm promoting, research those judges. Look at these people, look at why they're running for offices. Uh it's available, it's we're all very transparent now with Facebook and everything else. Find out why these folks are running. Us, get behind the ones that believe the way you believe. And will work tirelessly for the county.
Amen. Love it. Uh it's been a pleasure. I've I have nothing else. It's just been good to meet you.
Yeah, it's been great to meet you. I've watched so many of your podcasts. I just I just was telling you about Typewriter Hill and the stuff that you educate us on and uh. And uh so that's my wife's doing that now as well with uh, we'll take pictures of places and make it a game out of it. Who can name this place in Armstrong County and that, you know. It's been fun. It's been great. But you but you're you're a pleasure as well.
Yeah, great talking to you and all you guys. If you have any questions, uh make sure to go check out John's website, his Facebook page. I'll have those links in the description and um. I guess that's it. We'll see you in the next one, friends.
Thank you so much.